Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. We appreciate everyone here for City Council. It looks like we've got a full house, got a bunch of scouts, and we're excited to have you here. I'm sure you're excited to be here. You know, I can tell. But we'd like to first start with, we've asked Gary Briggs to come up and give us our inspirational message and prayer, so if he'd like to come up now.
Good to meet with all of you. Appreciate this opportunity, appreciate the invitation. Now, I was told I had 30 minutes, is that right?
Hey, you can take whatever you want. They might boo you after a while.
Well, it's good to see these young people behind me here. It's good to see them here. I'd just like to, the comments I've been to share with council and with the congregation behind me and those in the viewing audience, I want to attribute to Lloyd Newell's one of his messages that I really appreciated, especially as we start the year of 2015. I hope everyone listens to the message and acts upon it as far as our civic responsibilities here in this wonderful town of Spanish Fork, as we work together to share a common purpose. The story goes, as another new year rolled around, a middle-aged man sat quietly in his favorite chair, I've changed some names here, so no offense taken, Cheryl noticed him staring ahead with a thoughtful look on his face and said, "Steven, you look troubled. Is there something on your mind?" "Yes," he replied, "here we are at the beginning of another year, and it doesn't look like it will be any different from the last one, or the one before that. It makes me wonder how much meaning my life really has. I feel like I work hard every day, but what's the real purpose of it all? It's not unusual to sometimes feel this way. We all want to make meaningful contributions, but sometimes we wonder whether our efforts even matter." In response to such desires to live a more fulfilling life, some might turn inward, focusing more on satisfying their personal desires. They may seek meaning in recreation, entertainment, or the comforts and pleasures of life. Ultimately, however, their pursuits tend to leave them even more dissatisfied than before. Other people take a different approach. They choose to leave the safe confines of their usual comfortable life and turn outward in selfless service. Some are skilled medical workers, farmers, teachers, or business managers, and some have little more to offer than their time or a willing heart. Some travel to developing countries and some find opportunities to serve in their own neighborhoods, but they all have certain things in common. They want to make life better for someone else, and they're willing to do it. They always come away feeling richly compensated, and they rarely wonder if their life has purpose. Human beings have a special capacity to recognize the needs of others, if sometimes we can freely offer, even if it is only a smile and a word of encouragement. This is how we ascend to a more purposeful life, by reaching out to lift someone else. A well-known line of poetry says it best, "I'll lift you, and you lift me, and we'll both ascend together." Now, to all here and listening, Spanish Fork is a great city. I love the people. It's got great people, and I know that we can accomplish this in 2015, and each of us can do better. As we reach and help our neighbors, our neighborhood, especially our community, the Spanish Fork can be all that it can be, and even better in 2015. So our purpose is to make Spanish Fork even better. Let's rise together. And I leave that message with you. Our Father in Heaven, we pause the beginning of this Spanish Fork City Council meeting to unitedly express our gratitude to thee for all the many blessings that we enjoy. We're grateful for the good people who participate and work and volunteer in this wonderful city. We pray that they will be blessed for their efforts, that they will recognize the value of their contribution to this wonderful community. We're grateful for those elected officials before us, and we pray that this night, as they go over agenda items, that they will be inspired, that they will find them worthy of inspiration, that their hearts and minds will be touched to do the right things for the betterment of Spanish Fork. We're grateful for their time and for their talents and skills that they contribute. We're grateful for all those who serve and work and volunteer in this wonderful community. Bless them. May we unitedly have a common purpose and that we might rise together is our prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thanks, Gary.
I've asked Richard Davis to lead us in the pledge.
Will the audience please arise? Will the audience please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We can move to public comment. Anybody that'd like to come up and talk to us? Carrie, come on, don't be shy. Well, good, I do. I'm gonna take a moment here and just thank Carrie as everybody, or if they don't know, that Carrie's was our Director of the Chamber of Commerce and has resigned to take another position, and we're gonna miss her. And we tried to think of ways to thank you and tell you how much we appreciate all the work you've done. And so what this is, what we've come up with, we're gonna have a Spanish Fork City Proclamation declaring January 8th, 2015 as Carrie Hanks' Day.
Well, thank you.
I'm gonna read this here.
Was that a day before?
Well, you got one now. Whereas Carrie Hanks has been serving as the Executive Director of the Spanish Fork Area, Salem Area Chamber of Commerce since January 2011, and whereas Carrie Hanks has taken a new position, will soon be leaving the Chamber of Commerce, and whereas during Carrie Hanks' tenure with the Chamber of Commerce, membership of the chambers has increased over 40 percent, and whereas Carrie Hanks' leadership and guidance has helped all businesses in the community, large and small, and whereas the Spanish Fork Mayor and City Council have constantly relied on Carrie's advice in representing for business communities, and her voice and her leadership will be missed, whereas the City of Spanish Fork and the Spanish Fork Salem Area Chamber of Commerce are better today because of Carrie's time and leadership. Now therefore, I, Steve Laufson, Mayor of Spanish Fork City hereby proclaim January 8th, 2015 to be Carrie Hanks' Day in Spanish Fork.
Well, thank you. I don't know, what do you say about something like that?
Not a whole lot.
I'm deeply honored. Thank you so much. I do have to correct you, though, it's been since October 2009, since I was the Director of the Chamber.
I just read what they give me.
Seth, you messed up. But anyway, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with the Chamber and work with the boards. We've had, you know, people, their volunteer positions, they come and go, but they've done a remarkable job, I think, of promoting Spanish Fork and helping businesses to grow. It's the main focus of the Chamber, and I've been very honored and happy to have been a part of that organization and of the city. And I appreciate having my own day, that's great. And I want to thank you all for all the support you've given the Chamber and myself over the years. So, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie. Appreciate you. Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to come up and address the council? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Robert Peggnanny. I'm the Utah Elks Veterans Chairman, and I'm also a member of the Governor's Advisory Board on Veterans and Military Affairs. Essentially, this is a thank you and also an invite. This is our third annual Music From the Heart for our veterans, and we couldn't have done it without Spanish Fork City Council and the town of, or the City of Spanish Fork supporting us. With the funds that we raised last year with the cooperation of the American Legion Hand in Hand, the Diamond Fork Rodeo Club, just to name a few, we were able to send and take care of 600 veterans and their families throughout the year, taking them on fishing trips, horseback riding trips. We were able to take 23 female veterans who have been sexually assaulted in the military on a retreat with counseling, and we took 23 children who have lost a parent due to suicide or killed in action during the war. And again, we want to thank you very much. What we're doing is we're inviting you, because we're gonna have our third annual Music From the Heart at your great Ponderosa Building over here across the street. And our goal this year and focus this year is to raise funds for suicide prevention. Nationally, we're losing 22 veterans every day to suicide. If you watched the news right before we came in, there is a lockdown right at one of our VA centers right now with a veteran in El Paso, Texas. It has been such an epidemic and everything, we've even lost a veteran that was home three days from the war. So we'd like to invite you, the community and everything, to come out and support us on February 7th from 11:00 to 3:00 over across the street. And like I say, our goal is suicide prevention, and if we can reduce it by one number, we think we're gonna, you know, be successful. And as we look at it, is that we did not lose our veterans when they were deployed, and we do not want to lose them when they come home. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Robert. Anyone else like to come up? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Councilman Hall.
Maybe just to follow up a little bit with honoring Carrie today and creating her day, I'd like to make sure and recognize some of our board members that are here. I don't want to embarrass you too much there, but maybe stand up. Becky McConnell is our retiring President of the Chamber of Commerce, and she's done a great year here in 2014, and Carrie can attest to the help that she has been to the Chamber and the Director as well. Susan Taylor has been a board member for, geez, Susan, since the inception of the Chamber, but Susan's been great and is retiring from the board this year, Susan, is that right?
At least one year. Keep me on, I can't, I've been on long enough, I have to have a year out.
Yeah, yeah. So, you got Brent Wignall, who's a member of our board for the Chamber of Commerce and been a great asset to us. Randy Kaufman back there is our Assistant to the Director and done a great job this past year as well. I saw Todd Dickerson in here earlier, who's a board member, and I think Chris Baird was here as well, who's a board member. That's just some of the board members that showed up here today, but just to publicly thank Carrie on a day like this, and what Carrie usually does is turn around and thank the board members like she did here today that volunteer their time as well to further the business community. So publicly, here in City Council today, your praises can't be rung loud enough for Carrie as the Director and for you businesses, you board members here in the Chamber of Commerce that have done so much throughout the past year, but the past years of service as well with Carrie. So, thank you. Thank you from the city side of it. Again, it feels kind of odd doing that, because I'm just one of you guys. I come from the Chamber of Commerce and love you guys for all that you do for the city and for the business community. So, thank you. Other than that, we have the board meeting for the Chamber coming up this week, this Thursday morning, where we'll discuss the issues coming up and try to fill some very big shoes left by Carrie as well and talk to those people applying for the directorship. So, other than that, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Scobbs.
Mayor, just a couple of things. First, Happy New Year to everyone. What a great time to live in Spanish Fork. We've got some great activities throughout the year with Champions Challenge, Fiesta Days, Harvest Moon Hurrah, just things off the top of the head, but really just a great 2015 ahead of us as a city and a community. The only business to report on this Thursday, I will be attending the Airport Board Meeting. Different things on the agenda. We'll have our usual facilities report, financial report, and then we'll be talking about the apron rehab that's going on there at the airport on the tarmac. Those are really about the biggest things on the agenda, fairly small agenda, and I will report on that the next meeting. That's all.
Thank you. Councilman Dart.
Let's not forget the county fair, since we have our county commissioner here with us that we have during the year. We're grateful to have that here. I'd like to talk a little bit about what, kind of what Gary talked about. Last week or so, we had a fairly good-sized snowstorm, and I noticed the people on my street helping neighbors and so forth dig out, and I would encourage you, no matter where you live, to look around, see who needs some help, and get after it and help clear their sidewalks and driveways. I know it was greatly appreciated in my neighborhood, and so, like Gary said, let's rise together. Thank you, that's all I have.
Councilman Davis.
I wanted to talk a little bit about the same thing Councilman Dart was talking about. It was good during them snowstorms to see people going out and helping each other and shoveling the snows, and I also appreciate our city people going out and plowing their roads like they did. You know, we had those two great big storms, you know, Christmas Day and the next day, and to be up, you know, before Christmas, you know, doing those roads like that, but I appreciate the citizens doing that. We had a meeting yesterday with our Fiesta Days, that's moving on, and I want to say that we have our theme for this year, and this year's theme is "Feels Like Home." We're working on the logo on it now and trying to get that done. We've also chose our grand marshals for this year. This year's grand marshal will be Clyde Norman Nielsen, so we're pretty proud of those, those two people and all that they've done for the community of Spanish Fork and all the wonderful things that they've done, so we're gonna be happy for them. We've got a couple of new items that's gonna happen during Fiesta Days, and we're working on that and trying to iron those new programs out, but it's gonna be another great event. We're hoping that we will be again the number-one event in the state. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Yes, Mayor.
Paul. Councilman Gordon.
Just echo what Mike said about Carrie. Wonderfully, we'll be missed much and really appreciate you and everything you've done. We know you're not going away, though. It's not like it's a funeral, because we know you too well. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Was it up at the?
Please see.
Oh, there it is, I got it. Okay, we're gonna go back up. I skipped over a thing here. I was so excited with your proclamation there, Carrie, that I almost forgot the other one that we're doing. And so, we are gonna do another proclamation, and let me read this again. Spanish Fork City Proclamation declaring January 9th, 2015 as Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. Whereas Spanish Fork City maintains a police department which provides valuable service to the community and its residents, these acts of service are many. They range from meeting individual citizens' needs, to providing education and awareness, to protecting life and property. All of these services make our community safer, and whereas each day when a police officer goes to work, they know that they can face extreme dangerous situations that sometimes life and death decisions are made, must be made, on a moment's notice. And whereas each year in the United States, over 100 officers lose their lives, and as many as 203 officers have lost their lives in a single year while in the line of duty providing services to the community they serve. And whereas approximately 50,000 officers are assaulted while in the line of duty each year in the United States. Whereas approximately 14,000 officers are injured in the line of duty each year in the United States. Whereas officers face verbal abuse on a routine basis, yet must remain professional, courteous, and caring. And whereas officers play an integral role in our society in enforcing the laws and keeping the peace, everything from acts of service providing to law-abiding citizens to taking justified actions against felonies, predators. And whereas being an officer is often a thankless job, often with low pay, difficult hours, and little appreciation for what they do. Now therefore, the City of Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork City Council issues the following proclamation. January 9th, 2015 is hereby proclaimed to be Law Enforcement Appreciation Day in Spanish Fork City. As the Mayor and City Council, we encourage our residents to show their appreciation for law enforcement personnel. That appreciation may be shown in various ways, including but not limited to the following. Thank a police officer. Wear blue clothing in support of law enforcement. Send a card or letter of support to a local police agency. Share a positive story about a law-enforcement experience on social media. Be vocal about your support for law enforcement, both in person via social media. Use your creativity to show support for law enforcement in a positive way. So, we're very pleased with our police officers, especially here in Spanish Fork, and the job that they do, and so I think this is one way we can show our appreciation to our law enforcements and show our support to you. So, January 9th, it's your day. So, pass that on to all our police officers and let them know how much we appreciate them. Okay. I have a few things I'd like to discuss or talk about. This being a new year, this is our first council of the year, I'd like to look back on some of the accomplishments that the City of Spanish Fork had in 2014. And so, I think first I'd like to talk about or say that we had a great honor, where we were ranked the number-one city in Utah to live by an agency, and we're excited for that, because we knew, we all that live here know exactly what a great city it is, and it's finally nice to have recognition. Other thing that we had, we had the Champions Challenge Reading Program in every elementary school in Spanish Fork in April and May. This was a unique opportunity where the children got to read books and then they got to go to the Champions Challenge, and that went nationwide. They thought that was a great thing that we did there. We had the Championship Challenge Rodeo in May, Champions Challenge Rodeo in May. We had successful Fiesta Days. We had 35 straight sell-out rodeo performances over eight years. That's pretty neat to see. SFCN had their whole-home DVR, and also they had, they went to all-digital conversion, turning off the analog in October. We have live HD high school sports with our drone camera. We received funding to complete the River Trail from the golf course to the sports park. We were extremely successful, the Play Unplugged program launched by the Spanish Fork Salem Area Chamber of Commerce, and a lot to thank to Carrie for that, and if people don't know, that's who she's gonna go work for. So, I'm sure we'll see that again, won't we, Carrie? All right. Construction began on over 200,000 feet of retail space, stores like Walmart, Good Earth, Five Guys, Joann's, Covert's, and more. Almost 200 new homes were constructed. Constructed the west electric distribution line that allowed the west side of the city to receive power from two different sources, in our two different directions. We had the Aeroplane Trains Automobile Party at the airport in September, the Harvest Moon Hurrah. We hosted another wonderful Utah County Fair and Demolition Derby, and we're grateful for our partnerships with the county, Utah County, and we look forward to continue that with Commissioner Ellison. Appreciate you being here. We resurfaced 10 miles of road. Now, we've probably got some of the best roads in the state, and we've got a great crew that comes and takes care of that for us. In fact, we have other cities come and try to learn from our city what we're doing to do it right, and so it's pretty awesome that we did that. Redeveloped a major spring for the city and provided up over 1,000 acre-feet of water for use in the city. This allows us to gravity-feed another 27% of our pressurized irrigation water. We had our K-9 unit, Officer Grover and Lord, for a complete year. Many of our children may have seen them as Officer Grover has been to several schools teaching our children about Officer Lord and his abilities. He has been deployed nearly 200 times, of which, and been instrumental in 84 arrests, and found three suspects that were hiding from the police, one of them which was a kidnapping suspect. Eleven of our police officers will receive a life-saving award this year as their individual acts help someone's life and live another day. Our police department is busier than it's ever been. Last year, they responded to 21,435 calls for service. This year, they have had 23,004 calls for service. So, and our emergency preparedness officer has been meeting with local religious leaders helping to prepare for the unknown disaster or emergencies that may arise. A citywide drill will take place in April as we participated in the great Utah Shakeout. Those are just thumbnails of things that happened in the city last year, and we're really grateful for all the citizens and for everyone that participated and helped make this city, like the survey said, the number-one city in the state, and we'll take it, because we deserve it. All right. Now, moving on.
Several months ago, we talked a little bit about a few different things that were happening in the city relative to economic development and new stores that were coming, and a couple of months after that, we thought it'd be good to follow up, maybe around the first part of January, just to update people on what's happening, and particularly the northern part of the community where we've really had a lot of activity over the course of the past year. 2014 was a tremendous year in terms of new square footage that was constructed for all different types of retail businesses in the city. And in all candor, a couple of months ago, I really expected to be able to present new information tonight on new stores. information tonight on new stores that we're aware of that are coming, but frankly, there's really not a lot to share. We had a spurt about this time last year when we got familiar with specific plans that different companies had, many of which are now open and doing business, things like Good Earth, Five Guys, different establishments like that. So, given that there's not a lot new to share, I think on the agenda, we titled this Commercial Development Facts. I'm going to try to keep it as factual as I can, and really only share things that we've learned from the different companies that I'll talk about themselves. And I'll start with the bad news, and then end with some things that you're familiar with already, but some outstanding news that we just received a little bit more information on today. But the bad news is that, to our knowledge, there are no plans for anybody to construct a fine dining, sit-down restaurant in the community today. We certainly hope that will change. I can attest to the community that when you meet with commercial developers, you ask about that. We don't miss an opportunity to try to encourage, influence, pressure, coerce, do anything we can, try to get people to get us on the map relative to maybe helping to land a business like Olive Garden, Red Lobster, or someplace that serves red meat, Outback, Longhorn, different places like that. Again, for the community's benefit, I will attest to the fact that you do your job, I think. I think we've done as much as we can, and we've talked before about some of the factors that have, have played into how long it's taken for fine dining to maybe happen here, but we hope that changes. So, that's the bad news. Get that out of the way now, and hopefully we can share something different in upcoming months. Just some good news. Have a few dates here that I'll share relative to some things that aren't really new, but just in terms of when we expect some businesses that, that we know are coming will open. Let me start with Cafe Zupas. Right now, their plan is to open on February 11th. Completely excited about that. Walmart. We had hoped that they would be open by now. It's taken a little bit longer to get to where they'll be open than I think what we anticipated months ago. But March 11th, right now, is their anticipated opening date. Joann's, been under construction for a while. Right now, they're located on Main Street at the corner of Fourth North. They'll be moving to a property that's just west of Macy's and the Spanish Fork Marketplace Development. They plan to open on March 6th. Cubby's should open much sooner than the others, just a couple of weeks on January 20th. Malawi's Pizza, they're a few months behind the ones I've talked about. It's probably going to be sometime in April or May before they're open. An EBIT Credit Union probably will open early next month, be ready for business. So, just a little update by way of some, some dates and when people can, can look to be able to patronize some of these new businesses. And Culvers, thank you. Culvers opened yesterday. Talked a little bit about that before. Some of us have been there at least once already. Excited to have them in the community, as we are all of the businesses, and I hope that goes without saying. There's a lot of diversity in Spanish Fork. Not as much as we'd like, you know. We had a Longhorn Steakhouse or something like that, but we're getting there. But again, diversity, broad base of different types of businesses, different types of restaurants, retail establishments, and that's, that's only improving as these open. We, as the city, care a lot about retail development for many different reasons. Certainly, one of the big ones is quality of life. Simply the idea that our residents can patronize local businesses, comfort and ease of having those located close to their home versus needing to travel. You know, it typically has been to communities that are further north in the county here. But also, revenue is, is always a concern for us as we look for as many ways as possible to provide as high a level of service as we can with all of the things that the city does. And car dealerships potentially play a big role in that, and we're very, very excited that on February 1st, if not even maybe a few days earlier, the Doug Smith Spanish Fork Autoplex will open in Spanish Fork. They'll feature Dodge, Jeep, Chrysler, and the Chevrolet dealership that currently is being operated by Menhold Chevrolet. The ownership of that Menhold dealership will be transferred to Doug Smith. And it's hard to overstate how tremendous that, that likely will be for the community over time to have a company that has a presence in this county like Doug Smith here in Spanish Fork with those brands, some of which being brought back to Spanish Fork, to a part of the world where, as we understand it, those entities feel like they will do very, very well here. So, that's, that's tremendously good news for us. It hasn't necessarily been a secret at all, but today was the first day that we learned that, again, February 1st is, is going to be the day. They already have some signage up and so forth on the property on North Main, which really has been turnkey and ready to go for Doug Smith to bring those new brands or additional brands back to Spanish Fork, and we're really excited about that. So, that's what we have by way of Commercial Development Facts. If you have any questions, I'm happy to take those.
I've got one. Okay. Well, Walmart, the opening of Walmart facilitate new businesses coming in, do you think?
Yeah. I appreciate the way you put that. In my opinion, absolutely. Traffic patterns in that part of the community will start to change. We look for that to make a difference. Again, I'm trying not to speculate too much. That, I think, likely is going to, going to be kind of a game-changer. It's no secret that theaters have talked about doing something here as well. We started to hear more and more through the grapevine about a theater maybe being more ready to start construction. And when it comes to things like restaurants, typically they follow those types of entertainment uses pretty closely. So, that could be another thing that would really help bring about some of the change that I think a lot of residents in Spanish Fork really would like to see.
Good. Thanks, Dave. Consent items.
Okay, the first item we have is the UDOT Local Government Contract. We received a MAG grant to rebuild the Cut Bridge at the end of Center Street, also to widen out that intersection so that it will have a much higher capacity. And this is the grant agreement to go along with that. Any questions about that? We plan to do construction this summer on, on that bridge widening and redoing the intersection.
How long will it be closed? Is that?
In the bid documents, right now, it's not bid out quite yet, but it, it says that the bridge can only be closed for five weeks, and that will be during the summer when the, when school's out, so.
Pre or post Fiesta Days? Just thinking about the parade route starting at the top of there. Do you know? Probably pre.
Close.
Pre, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
It might even go through Fiesta Days, so.
Gotcha. But that's not...
It's not on the route.
Right, right.
Is there a, I can't remember, I think we've seen the plan, but is there a sidewalk component that goes with that to make it safer for those kids to get across Highway 6 into their school right there?
Yeah, there's actually a pretty wide sidewalk that is protected by a Jersey barrier-type concrete barrier from the traffic, and so should be very, very safe for pedestrians to go across that, that bridge.
Our two most important council members live on that side of town.
Brandon has a lot of answering to do on Sundays usually, but the...
Project rebuilds this bridge. It widens it to five lanes plus a pedestrian way here on the north side of the bridge. It also widens out this intersection and builds a new signal so that there's five lanes coming from this direction as well. This whole intersection should operate a lot better after this, and the bridge will be much safer. It also improves this intersection quite a bit, so.
You're going to be able to give your water line extended through that, through the girders?
Yes.
That you talked about?
Yes.
I thought that was an important part of it.
And it really is. At one time, there was a, a utility bridge right here that failed, and so we've stubbed all the utilities here in anticipation of putting them in the girders of this bridge, and that is part of the project. So, water line, pressurized irrigation, electrical, all of that will be in communication.
Address the separation of the two projects, this year or next year? Center Street Bridge this year, Center Street Lower Part next year?
Okay, so, we were hopeful to do some, some work here and build a signal here, and that we couldn't afford, and the grant money that we received, we could not afford to do the signal here. So, in the next year or two, we will be looking at widening options or restriping options along here, and a possible signal here should be done in the, in the next couple of years, so. Any more questions about Cut Bridge? All right. The next item is, is a professional services agreement with Hales Engineering. This is just an update of our old professional services agreement. We've made some changes to it. So, before we do any contract work with any consultants, we require them to have a new professional services agreement with those updates with us. Any questions about that? And then, Item D, a non-disclosure agreement with First Solutions. First Solutions is a broadband company out of Idaho. They've come to us wanting to discuss some options that they might be able to present to us, and has asked for a non-disclosure agreement so that those discussions might be confidential. And then, the last item is a lease agreement, the McKell Lease Agreement. This property owner would like to lease a section of, a section, a section of, of public right-of-way that is anticipated to be public right-of-way, but probably many, many, many years from now. And the lease is canceled, we can cancel the lease within 60 days, and he'll maintain the property. And so, we don't see any problem with that as long as we can use it for right-of-way when we need it, if we need it. There is a chance that the road would go another direction in which case we wouldn't need it, and so, any questions about that?
Just one question. That lease, the McKell lease commences, or it should be commencing January 1 of 2015? Is that correct?
Yeah, and we'll just change that to the date that it's signed by the mayor.
Okay. I didn't, it had 14 here, I don't know if that was...
Should be 15.
Okay.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Dart. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn to redevelopment.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we are now in RDA.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon to approve the consent items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got a, items here to be considered by agency to be routinely and to be enacted by a single motion, so. You want to come up, Junior, and tell us what we're doing here?
So, we have, we've had a request from Young Living Farms to create a community development area. It's what we call a CDA within the redevelopment agency. This is to allow them to expand their business. So, we just heard recently from Dave talking about how we like our commercial establishments, our retail establishments. We also like our industrial establishments. They're the ones who provide a pretty strong property tax base. They also provide employment, which is just so critical when we're growing as fast as we've been growing. So, we have been working with them for several months now to accommodate their request. You can see the area on the map, the white large building there is their existing building. They proposed to expand that, and they're asking for some help. And so, we have put together a project area plan. So, the first item that we'll need to do, as I sit down there, is we'll need to open up and have a public hearing. And as we get in that public hearing, Dave Anderson, again, will, will go through the plan and those things, so I won't jump into, to his ballywick there. But the purpose of the public hearing is to allow property owners within the area and those immediately adjacent to make any notes that they have, to make any objections. At this point, I need to report, actually, I should refer to you now as the chair since we're in the redevelopment agency portion of the meeting, and you've all put on a different hat now. But the agency has received no written objections to this proposed plan, nor am I aware of any oral objections. So, tonight will be the last night that we can take public comment and see if there are any. Following the close of the public hearing, we need to do several things. We need to, first of all, adopt a resolution which approves the plan. That's on the agenda. You have a copy of that in your packets. Then we need to review and approve several interlocal agreements, and when we get to that point, I'll review those with you at that time. So, with that said, it would be appropriate now to open the public hearing, turn the time over to Dave, he'll give his presentation. We take public comment, and we can proceed that way. Thank you.
Okay.
Motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Scoop. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Dave.
Thank you. I'm just going to talk a little bit more about the project area plan that Junior just referenced, but before I do that, let me make note, just for your benefit and the record, that you have an updated version of the feasibility plan for the project. There were two changes that were made after things were brought to our attention by Young Living. I don't believe they're terribly substantive. We updated the square footage of their existing building, and we, we changed one of the numbers on the, the minimum anticipated capital investment portion of the document. None of the changes impact, I think, what I'll talk about right now, but I just wanted to mention that you do have that updated feasibility plan. With that said, Junior just touched on some of the, the main points of the project. He mentioned that we're talking about a parcel that's owned by one entity, which does make this easier than it potentially could be. It's a 12.8-acre site. Young Living currently has a facility on the property of approximately 100,000 square feet in size. They're looking to add space to that, perhaps in a couple of phases. Roughly 100,000 square feet in each phase, should they choose to phase it. The subject property currently is zoned industrial one, and the expansion that Young Living's contemplating here in Spanish Fork is consistent with our zoning provisions. We'd certainly allow that type of use to occur as it currently is happening at that particular location. Should the project be approved and Young Living decide to proceed in Spanish Fork with the expansion... the expansion, we would guess that they would invest something between 15 and 28 million dollars in the expansion, in going to the square footages that I just mentioned. And, I guess with that said, I'd like to just take a real quick minute, I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, but maybe Seth, if you could help with that graph that we have from that one slide, just to talk a little bit about tax increment. And that's really what this agreement ultimately boils down to, or this project with this plan and the agreement that we'll talk about. Is it gone?
No, but it's not working right.
Okay.
But, is it?
So, for example, right now, obviously, Young Living, they have a facility on the property, and they're paying property tax on that existing facility. We might refer to what they're currently paying as the base. Now, with an expansion, with new investment, the building becoming larger, with them putting additional equipment in the building, and different things like that, the taxes that they'll pay, either through real property tax or personal property tax, those will increase. And that increase is what we'll talk about now, in terms of what's above the base. So, everything that we see here above the base is intended to represent new tax that will be created with this expansion. And, just to be clear, with an arrangement like this, we're only talking about new tax that will be generated. So, we're going to talk about how some of this, this new tax revenue, will be used by Young Living to help them facilitate this expansion here in Spanish Fork. And that's one way that we, as a municipality and as different communities in Utah, can help be competitive with other states and different incentives that they might offer to companies to expand or relocate to places in different locales. When we talk about incentives for economic development, this is really typically what we're talking about. It is tax increment, and that increment, that is, that's the difference between what currently a site is generating in terms of property and personal tax, and what would be generated if a project happens. So, again, that's represented by these portions of this chart that are identified as taxing entities and agencies. So, with that said, what's proposed is that 32% of any new tax that will be generated with this expansion will go to the existing taxing entities, just like the base taxes do, what we're currently getting. And those different entities are things like Spanish Fork City, the Nebo School District, different irrigation districts, the Central Utah Water Project people, and perhaps Utah County, different entities like that. Now, there's obviously another portion as well, and as proposed, 65% of the new tax would be, after Young Living meets criteria that are identified in the plan, be given to Young Living as a way to help them justify the investment in our community, and simply to make the finances work. And from my perspective, it's even much more important to that. That's partly how we, as a city, are competitive with communities in other states where I know, cities, counties, states, for example, they'll help facilitate a company having free land to expand, and they'll do other things to really try to incentivize companies to locate jobs in their jurisdictions. So, this is how we make an effort to compete with that. The last thing I want to point out about this chart is that, you can see you have the base taxes, those go on forever, but also, the longevity of the plan is limited. At some point in time, Young Living would conceivably receive all that they're going to receive by way of assistance from this project, and at that point in time, the taxing entities receive all of the personal and property tax. In this case, we're talking about a project that would last for 10 years. So, from that perspective, just speaking for myself and how I see it through the city's eyes, it's an opportunity for us to kind of jumpstart a project with the understanding that we will forego some new tax for a period of time, with the understanding that at the end of that period, us and all of the other taxing entities would receive all of the tax benefit, as well as the other benefits that are talked about in the plan and the analysis, in terms of having additional employees in the community and everything that comes with that. So, that's maybe the end of my little one-on-one on tax increment, but, again, 10 years is the anticipated timeframe for the project. There is a limit by way of the maximum that Young Living could receive, this 1.71 million dollars. And like I mentioned, as proposed, the breakdown's 32-65, there's a 3% administrative fee that largely goes to the legal people that prepared these documents. And, Junior, let me ask, am I missing anything that you think I need to point out or talk about?
Talk about what we have to help and work with, because this is the just almost new business, in fact, it's also being called by the whole.
Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, a key component for us as staff, as we look at these types of opportunities, is that it really is a competitive field. In this case, we know that there's a community in Idaho that's presented Young Living with a pretty attractive opportunity, and that's really what's brought this about. This is our response to that opportunity that exists for Young Living. From my perspective, I am grateful that Young Living has given us the opportunity to respond. We could talk about some other companies, I won't mention any by name, that, you know, really, we learned that they were leaving Spanish Fork after the decision had been made, and we weren't given an opportunity to try to help them have reasons to stay here. That's not the case tonight. It is an opportunity, like Junior said, for us to help an existing company that certainly is a good corporate member of the community expand here. This is something that we would certainly do for other companies if they were in a like situation, and it is, it's coming about because we're trying to compete with another location that's in another state. Again, I feel like there's something that I'm missing, but I think that's basically it. Obviously, you opened up a public hearing, Junior mentioned that we didn't receive any written protests of any kind, so I think at this point in time, we just take public comment? Okay. I know Mr. Ron Harris, representative of Young Living's here, along with Neil Robinson, I don't know if you'd want them maybe to take a minute at the onset of the hearing, maybe to provide a little bit of additional background, but they-
Sure.
That's what we are.
Guys like to come up? Good seeing you again.
Good to see you. I'm Ron Harris, Vice President of Real Estate and Facilities for Young Living Essential Oils. This is Neil Robinson.
I'm Senior Vice President with Newmark Grub, we're a commercial real estate firm, and have had the honor of working with Young Living for over 10 years.
So, first of all, want to thank Spanish Fork, appreciate the efforts that have been made to come out and visit the facility. We built this facility that we're in approximately seven years ago, and we've been attracted to Spanish Fork. I don't live in Spanish Fork, but we like having a business here, and-
That'll change, we can get you.
You're mine. And we appreciate that. Your staff has been, when we made the decision to go from another community and relocate this facility to Spanish Fork, your staff was outstanding in helping us to make that switch, make that change, and to move forward. We needed to move forward on a timely basis to handle our growth at that time, meeting with members of the school district and with the members of the council. We've tried also, by the way, to be good citizens. We hope that you feel like we're a good member of your community. We try and keep that property clean, and to be good to our employees, and to, and carrying on a business that we think really improves lives. So, I'm assuming you're all familiar with Essential Oils. I love working for a company that does something to improve, you know, the quality of life of people. I use about 36 of the products myself regularly. We have about 400 SKUs. I don't look that good, and my joke is I don't look that good, but when you realize I'm 140 years old, then it might be a bit of an advertisement for using them. We're just accelerated our 20th year in 2014. We brand ourselves as the world leader of essential oils. We do have competitors now, and they have been trained by us, so they could go out and continue to carry that forward. I said today, when we talked to the city or the county commissioners, that we're a little bit like New Skin. New Skin was kind of the mother for all the direct sales companies, and we've become in a small way, kind of the mother for essential oil companies. We're privately owned by Gary and Mary Young. Gary is, I refer to him as kind of a Renaissance man. He's been everything from an ice road trucker, to a farmer, to an author, to a scientist, to a businessman. We get to see him in the office a few days every month. Most recently, he's been up in Canada acquiring a farm. We call it our Northern Lights Farm, where he's up there finding more black spruce for us, and we will reforest, and we do that, and helping us to stay up with the demand for some of the more and more difficult to source oils. He's still discovering oils, which is one of the reasons we refer to ourselves as the world leader. He still goes off, he spent three years recently in Ecuador, and introduced a lot of oils at that time when he was down there, starting a farm and other ventures. We have farms around the world. We have the one that you know about in Mona, hopefully. We have two farms in Idaho, we have a farm in France, we have a farm in Oman, we have a farm in Ecuador, we have a farm in Peru, and I know I missed some. We also have a lot of cooperative ventures. We work with farmers throughout the world. These oils are grown throughout numerous climates, but we have a standard. Every oil that comes in is tested to a standard. We don't share that standard with anyone else. We don't even share it with our vendors. If they miss the mark, then we send, it's not our standard, send us another sample, because we don't want them to go back and just put an additive in it to make it up to our standard. We struggle with a few areas of the world where they tend to do that. It's a little bit like, we said, like if you have 1% milk and you want 2% milk, somebody might just add a little butter fat to it, so we don't do that. We have this standard. We're vertically integrated, unlike our competitors. We talk about being from seed to seal. That's from what type of seed we put in the ground, what type of soil we put in the ground, when we cultivate, how we distill. Gary is one of the innovators for distilling. We have some of the largest distilleries in the world. We test, as we've said, against our standard, and then we seal to ensure that we have the purity. Our sales history, just briefly, and I'm almost done, our sales history has been rather standard for the period I've been here. I've been with the company about 11 years. We've been experiencing kind of the 8% to 12%, 15% a year growth. Two years ago, we had a dramatically different year, 30%, 40% increase, and then last year, we broke triple digits, and that's stressed the infrastructure. If you take a year of 10% and put that into, you know, one year and multiply it by 10, it's 10 years into one, and it's been a little bit stressful. It's been a little bit stressful for us with regard to also capitalizing that. It's created a challenge, and as we've looked to find additional space, you know, I'm sure you're aware that we've just received an award from the state of Utah. We've been out checking our options, trying to be good businessmen and make sure that we know what our options are, and had offers from other states, but the state has now given us an award, not as lucrative as some of our offers, but our homes here, we have most of our staff, our corporate headquarters in Lehigh at the current time, we occupy about 20, 120, 130,000 square feet, about five or six different buildings and things given part.
The corporate offices.
So, that's one of our challenges, to find a property here in, hopefully, Utah County, and to build the global headquarters, and to stop leasing, and build our future global headquarters there. So, we've had that award, and we've also been looking at where to place call center, where to place our, what we call our manufacturing production fulfillment facility, and we have the property here to do some expansion. We also have warehouses throughout the world, Tokyo, Mexico City, just outside of London, in Australia, Brisbane, and I'm going to miss some, in Ecuador, where we send our product. But, this is the core of all that. This is where we prepare not only the shipments to people in the United States and Canada, but we send bulk shipments down to those satellite warehouses out of here. But, it's created a challenge on our capital, and that's one of the reasons we're seeking, you know, these incentives. As you look at what we're going to spend, you know, 15 to 28 million dollars, it may seem like these incentives are a small percentage of that, but it adds up, and so, we're trying to do that. But, we have demands, inventory is one. As we've gone into this unusual, exceptional period of sales, we've had to store more inventory. A lot of our product is annually harvested, so we have to have enough to last us till the next harvest. We just did inventory last Saturday, and we had three times the inventory in that little building that we had a year ago, and so, money's gone towards inventory. We're, money's going towards more lease space, towards additional material handling equipment. We designed that building with the ability to not only expand out, but up, so we've just added a work deck, an additional conveyor, and systems inside that building. We have a lot of demands recently to keep up with all the testing, the scientific machinery to do our testing, and so, as we process more samples and more product, we have more testing equipment and farms, farms and distilleries, and so, that's why we're here seeking the incentives. And, we appreciate it, and we would like very much to stay in Spanish Fork. I'm glad that we haven't had any public comment, you know, in the negative, but we're open to suggestions. We once again want to be good citizens. We love your, we love the workforce that you provide for us and the people here, and I guess the last thing I said is if we had to, perhaps we should include in this a steak and seafood restaurant.
Why, there you go, and you've got it made.
That might be the-
That might be the-
Seals the deal.
Definitely would seal the deal.
Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you, and we appreciate what you've done here, and we want you to, we appreciate all you've done, and we want to keep you here, know that.
Yeah, I was just going to add one quick thought, as broker real estate agents, our job is to present clients with all the options, and more times than not, they want the best deal. That's the criteria, and everything else kind of comes second. But, what this city did when Young Living first came here, it was a complete night and day on welcoming them, getting things approved, getting things approved quickly. You could call even the mayor, anybody would be responsive. Dave Oler played an incremental part in making that happen. So, that had a lot to do with the decision to hopefully stay here, and even though there were better deals on the table, Ron always wanted to make sure, not only to give you a chance, but make every effort we could for them to stay here, because that's how highly they think of you. I just wanted to-
Appreciate that. Okay, is there anyone that would like to address from the public this issue?
Can I ask a question?
Come up here and state your name.
Randy Chipman. I was just curious, I'm not obviously very well educated on the whole project, but I was curious to quantify maybe those numbers, that, I thought there was a number mentioned for the total tax incentive versus how many estimated jobs we would, permanent full-time jobs we would expect, and things like that. Is there a quantify, to put those, put numbers on that chart, and the jobs that would correspond to that? to that?
Sure. Yeah, I appreciate that. One note that I made after I sat down, the thing I knew I was forgetting, and I think Ron touched on this. In order for Young Living to receive the full benefit, they need to employ two hundred new full-time employees. So, that's a threshold, that's part of the arrangement that's before you tonight. And let's get to the right part of the benefit analysis.
Hey, that did, by the way, I'm sorry, that didn't include a lot of conversion of temp employees to.
Right.
Full-time employees as well.
Exactly.
We had at one point several months ago, a hundred and eighty-one temp employees that we were just trying to continue to bring them in and convert them as we found, you know, them to be suitable for our market.
Page five is where I was looking, Dave, the two hundred full-time employees at forty-one-thousand-eight-hundred, you know, salary benefit packages.
Exactly. Thank you. So, again, that's one of the requisite criteria that would have to be met by Young Living in order for them to qualify for the incentive that we're talking about tonight. In terms of new tax revenue that would be generated. Yeah, it's more than that.
That's the thirty-two percent you're basically trading, as I understand it.
I've really just focused on the maximum potentially that Young Living could receive through the increment that would be generated, which is sixty-eight percent of it, and again, that's one point seven million dollars. Looking now at the.
Eighty-six.
So, now I keep going back to the schedules. Page six of the plan?
Yeah, six in the middle of that paragraph. The one point seven's capped, but it's estimated at one point eight-five million of the six, that's the sixty-eight percent.
Sixty-eight percent.
Would be getting a maximum one point one-four, or excuse me, eight hundred and seventy-thousand-two-seventy-six.
Which would go to the taxing entities, right? So, it's the eight seventy plus the one point eight.
Correct. And so, layman's terms, correct me if I'm wrong, and I don't know if this is the place to say it, but to try to, in the ten-year period, Randy, you're talking about basically saying sixty-eight percent of that, what might, they might get as a benefit is one point seven capped out, and it would be that we're getting instead of nothing, eight hundred and seventy thousand two seventy-six over a ten-year period, not including.
Two hundred.
Two hundred new jobs at forty-two thousand dollars a year. I don't know, quick, rough?
Yeah, I think that's fine. Sounds like a banker.
Yeah, yeah, right. Sounds like a home town farm banker. Did that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything, anybody else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
Before we do that, by purposes of the act, at least in the minutes, we need to show that we have also afforded the taxing entities an opportunity to be heard. So, those are the city, Utah County, Nebo School District, Central Utah Water Conservancy District, and Springville Drainage District. I don't know, Commissioner, if you wanted to address anything, but at least in the minutes, we need to know that we've given the opportunity to taxing entities to make some statement as well, and, you know, after that, or if there aren't any, then we can close the public hearing.
Commissioner, would you like to come up and?
Only if it is you asking.
Well, good. Gosh, I'd like you to come anytime. You know, it's just good to see your smiling face.
We recognize that this has been something that's been in the making here in Spanish Fork for a while, and we've had some meetings with you. We've met a few times and have some information on it. And I think generally speaking, in the past, you could, you can say that we have been supportive of these things, recognizing a significant change in the, in the numbers of commissioners, and I have two new ones that I'm working with right now. I don't know for sure how they will come down on this, but I'm optimistic that we'll be able to participate with you, so.
Correct.
But I'll have to get at least one more of them, so. I may have to call on you to come in first.
Yeah.
Seems like you've had a busy two days anyway.
What's that?
Probably had a busy two days anyway.
Has been. I've survived a full day and a half after they've been sworn in.
There you go. Well, if you, we got people that can help.
But obviously, the goal is to try and do good things, and I think some, some people in their thinking, they, they look at it a little bit differently, and one of the questions that is asked sometimes is, well, how do you level the playing field? In fact, I took the opportunity after we had the presentation this morning to sit down and just give some information, a little bit of an overview with the, with the commissioners in terms of RDAs, EDAs, CDAs, and the way they work and all, and the reason why we do these things. And that was one of the questions that was asked is from, from one of the commissioners expressing a little bit of concern and saying, well, if we do this, for one, how about the next guy that asks? And the next guy, well, it's a case-by-case basis. You look at them all and try and make the best decision you can as they come down the line, and sometimes it's a matter of helping to get things started in an area, and that you don't necessarily have to treat everyone equally so much as you try and be fair with people as they come. So, I've attempted to, to lay the groundwork. I don't know how successful, but we'll probably have to have the city come back, and when we actually get it on. Today was just a work meeting. We don't have, have not had it actually on the.
One good thing to look at is the things that trigger the incentives.
Yes, and that's, and that's something that we'll want to make sure that we're understanding and, and just how you're planning on all of that working in terms of the post-performance and the nature of what you're proposing, so.
So, we'll be excited to have you come back and talk with us about that and get it on an actual agenda for that.
Wonderful.
Okay?
Thanks, Commissioner. All right, now I entertain a motion to go out of public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
At this point, it's time to hopefully adopt some findings, make some findings and adopt them. At that point, then we can proceed to pass the resolution which approves the plan which has been presented. So, for the record, I'm going to take a little longer than I usually do, but I'm going to read the proposed findings that our RDA attorney has indicated we need to make in order to comply with the provisions of the law. So, the findings are as follows. The adoption of the plan area, or the adoption of the project area plan will, one, satisfy a public purpose by, among other things, encouraging and accomplishing appropriate development and economic development within the project area. Two, provide a public benefit as shown by the benefit analysis included in the project area plan as required pursuant to section seventeen C dash four dash one oh three, subparagraph eleven of the Act. Three, be economically sound and feasible. It is expected that the private sector will perform required construction and installation relating to projects, and any related funding from the agency will be pursuant to interlocal agreements entered into between the agency and one or more taxing entities and/or by way of grants received by the agency. Four, conform to Spanish Fork City's general plan. Also, the plan provides that all development in the project area is to be in accordance with the city's zoning ordinances and requirements. And lastly, promote the public peace, health, safety, and welfare of Spanish Fork City. So, if the board feels that you can adopt those findings, it would be appropriate this time to take a motion, making those findings and adopting those findings.
So, we need a.
Just need to make a motion to approve those findings.
Findings. And then adopt those findings, yes.
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis.
Second.
Second by Councilman Scobes. We don't need a roll call on this, do we? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Now, with the adoption of the findings, we need to adopt the plan. There is a resolution in your packet that does that, so we now need a motion, excuse me, a motion to adopt resolution RDA number fifteen oh one, which approves, adopts and approves the Sierra Bonita Community Development Project Area Plan dated November twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen.
Motion to approve resolution fifteen dash zero one.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Dart. This is a, will be a roll call vote. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
And approve. Passes.
Thank you. Now that we've adopted the plan, in order to fund the plan, we need to approve the interlocal agreements. That's where the tax increment monies will come to the agency. It's because of these other taxing entities are agreeing to do so. So, on the agenda tonight, we have an interlocal agreement with the city, with Nebo School District, with Central Utah Water Conservancy District, and with Utah County. You've heard from Commissioner Ellardson that the county's still considering that. This is on the agenda for Nebo School District next week at their board meeting. It's also on the agenda for Central Utah Water for their January board meeting. We've been working with Springville Drainage District. We're not quite there with them yet, but we're getting encouraging results back. So, these interlocal agreements, I'm going to talk about them in a group, but when we adopt them, adopt them each by separate resolution, if you will. And when I say that, you know, the other entities haven't acted upon them yet. Two of them will act this month. The county will, will act one way or the other, probably this month as well, but shortly. So, we need to approve them, then they can approve them. Once we've both approved them, we'll need to publish a summary of them. We can do that jointly, and then they become effective. These agreements with all but the school district, I'm going to touch on them a little bit. These entities are authorizing the county assessor when they receive the tax entity's share of the new tax increment, that they'll send sixty-eight percent of that to the agency, and thirty-two percent of that they'll keep and distribute back to the taxing entity. Out of that sixty-eight percent, three percent of that will be used for administrative expenses. Most of that will go to Mr. File, who's been our RDA attorney. We've had some other expenses. We'll have some publication expenses coming forward. We'll have a few other expenses moving forward. Now, typically, we take five percent because this is a one-owner project. We've anticipated we should be able to cut our costs. We've taken three percent, and that gives the taxing entities an extra two percent. So, the interlocal agreements do that. Now, the school district is a little bit different. They have asked that a hundred percent of the increment come to the agency rather than just sixty-eight percent. And then, in our agreement with the school district, the agency will take the thirty-two percent and pass on to the school district. The net result is the same for all of the entities, but because of the laws that the school district has to deal with, this allows them a little bit more freedom in how they can use that thirty-two percent. And so, they are the major taxing entity. Most of our, if you look at your tax, but most of that bill goes to the school district. So, we think, you know, they've been a great team player over the years as we've done this, and if we can help them by honoring that request, then we feel we should step up and do that. So, again, the net result is the same. You need to understand that. But we will, as an agency, have to pass on part of that because we'll receive all of theirs. The others will just receive sixty-eight percent. So, questions about any of that? With that then, Mayor, it would be appropriate to adopt a resolution for both Spanish Fork City, Utah County, Nebo School District, Central Utah Water Conservancy District. Then we'll have to come back at a future time, we get Springville Drainage done and approve that one, which looks pretty promising at this point, but.
So, is that resolution fifteen dash oh five?
There should be separate resolutions for each of them.
So, we have fifteen, we have two, three, four, and five that needs to be approved tonight, and then the Springville Drainage.
We'll do that at a future date.
So, you just want, do you want them?
Separately.
Separately?
Please.
Okay, so.
Motion to, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion we approve the resolution RDA number fifteen dash oh two, interlocal agreement with Central Utah Water Conservancy District.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dart and a second by Councilman Davis. We'll do this by roll call vote. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Hey, that approve, passes.
Motion to approve RDA resolution fifteen dash zero three, approving the interlocal agreement with Nebo School District.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. We'll do this at roll call. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Hey, that passes.
Motion to approve RDA resolution fifteen dash zero four, approving an interlocal agreement with the Spanish Fork City.
With Spanish Fork City.
With Spanish Fork City.
Yeah, it's the agency now.
Okay. The RDA.
A motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Scobes. Roll call vote, Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
That one passes.
I move that we approve RDA resolution fifteen dash zero five with Utah County interlocal agreement.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. This will be a roll call vote. Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
That passes.
If there's no more agency business, we go back to city council.
Motion to go back into city council.
Second.
Wait, wait, Commissioner Ellardson, go on up here.
Can I put a P.S. on?
You betcha. You can do anything you want because we like you.
Wow, wow, wow. Get that written down.
Didn't get there.
Yeah, darn.
No, I, I was just thinking that over the years that I've had the opportunity of working with the city and various RDAs, EDAs, CDAs, it becomes very evident, and I compliment the city on their judicious manner in the way that you have managed in your affairs in terms of the way you deal with, with these types of things, in terms of the term, the amount, and actually letting them expire at the end of their initial period and those kinds of things. I've said this before, Dave, I, I hope you've heard me say this before, but not everyone does it as, as well as Spanish Fork City does. You just need to know that, and we compliment you for that, so.
Hey, thanks you. Commissioner, appreciate that.
I'm going to excuse myself.
You're excused. Thanks for being here. Come anytime.
Motion to go out, motion to go.
I have some meetings to go to.
Motion to go back into city council.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Davis, a second by Councilman Gordon. Go back into regular meeting. All in favor, say aye.
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 We are now back.
Now that you have your city council hats on, we have a couple of items of business that relate to the RDA business. The first thing is we need to adopt an ordinance by the city now, not the agency, which accepts and approves the Sierra Bonita Project Area Plan. So, you have that ordinance in your packet. We need to go ahead and approve the ordinance now that the agency has adopted that plan.
Okay, I would move we approve ordinance number zero one dash fifteen, ordinance of the city council, Spanish Fork City, state of Utah, adopting ordinance oh one fifteen. I lost it.
That's all right. Got a motion by Councilman Dart.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. Roll call vote on this. Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Okay, that one.
Next item in business also relates to the RDA. Should recall in the RDA, we approved an interlocal agreement between the agency and the city. Well, the city now needs to approve that as well so that we can, both entities can sign it, and that will be enforced. That will be the first interlocal entity to kick off this new CDA.
Motion to approve Resolution fifteen dash zero one, Spanish Fork City approving an interlocal agreement with the Spanish Fork RDA.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Davis. Roll call again. Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye, aye.
That also passes. Okay. Takes care of a lot of that.
Mayor.
Yo, there you are. Speak to me.
Let me just take a minute and explain because we really don't go into RDA a lot. And just to make sure everybody is familiar with some of the things we do and have done with the redevelopment agency. The redevelopment agency is a separate government entity. You people wear a different hat when you function as a redevelopment agency. What we've done through the years, Commissioner Ellerton kind of alluded to some of that. But when you look up here at the map, Kirby Lane RDA and North Industrial Park RDA were the first two industrial agencies, redevelopment agencies that we put together. And because of those, you can see the old Banda Press building here. Jahabo was the industry that located here. Off the map down here is the Finger Hut Building. Over here, you have the Kirby Building, which started out as Kirby Building Company. That built big buildings, manufactured big buildings. They went out of business for ten years. Chisona Aluminum from Chisona, Pennsylvania, came out and looked at this building and said, "We'd like to buy it and locate there." So we put together the Kirby Lane RDA in order to accommodate Chisona Aluminum. Finger Hut came in. We did an RDA for the Finger Hut Building, and that's what allowed them to come in. When the Finger Hut Building RDA increment was completed, as Commissioner Ellerton indicated, the city basically stopped the increment, and now the money started going back to the school district, the county, and the other entities. You've got some of these other RDAs that have been put together. Some of them are inactive at this time. The Swenson RDA is inactive. The Dominguez is inactive. But these RDAs are there, ready to accommodate, accommodate future industry if we need to. You have the Windmill Project that was put together through the RDA. That possibly wouldn't have happened without the RDA. You have the Costco Project here that was put together through a CDA. So, and then Gateway out here, which was the old Provo Craft Project, along with the original Young Living. And then this new RDA or CDA that we've created is basically within that area. So there's a lot of use that we've had through the redevelopment agency and a lot of industry that's been located in our community because we've been able to use this as a tool. And some of these industries, I know there is one industry that was looking out in this area years ago. And, you know, we went back to Chicago to, to visit with them. They ended up getting a better deal up in Twin Falls because that community put together a better incentive package than we could put together. Mayor Huff and I went to Missouri and basically went out and visited the Jahabo facility. And as we visited them, they came back in and they located here, just south of Longview Fiber. So there's a lot of these industries that have been able to come about because of the use of the incentives that are provided through the redevelopment agency. And we've had other entities besides just the county. I know the school district has expressed appreciation to the city for ending the redevelopment agency, the increment, when it needed to be ended. And we've done that on many of these projects. So this is a very important tool that we've used, and I think we've used it responsibly through the years. So I just wanted to add that information.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, David.
That's almost as good as one oh one.
Well, I think from a, just quickly to piggyback, I mean, that stands out to me as far as looking at numbers all day for work and then being able to see something to echo what Ron says and Commissioner Ellerton said. I mean, good, good job to Spanish Fork City staff. I think the citizens need to know what's immediate right now is in our North Park area where we're waiting for a steakhouse to come, and people are wondering, "Well, what are we doing, city, to get, you know, to get that to happen?" Well, quietly in the background of something just happening here, we potentially created, you know, not created, the company created, but we facilitated a place for two hundred more jobs in our community and, you know, that much more tax revenue for our citizens. And those are real numbers, forty-two thousand dollars in a living wage for two hundred more people. So it, it just seems like a success story, and citizens ought to know that. Your city staff, working hard, Dave and Seth and Dave and Junior and everybody working hard to do that is, you know, those are real figures that make a difference. So kind of quiet behind the scenes, but I don't know, really need to see come to fruition if, if it can, so.
Right. All right. Reader's Digest version.
All right, we, we, annually, we want to modify the, the city standards. And so this is, this annual revision, and I'd just like to briefly go over the highlights of them.
Like briefly.
And then leave it with you for a month to, to go over and ask any questions with us. And we will come to you in February asking you to approve these. If you could just scroll up to any red areas. We won't talk about all of them, but just the more significant ones. One of them is our MS four permit requires us to implement low-impact development, or LID principles, in development. And so we are defining that, and you will find many LID-type changes to the standards later on. One section that's really important is specialized engineering. So we get to that. One of the problems that cities have had, and you'll see this in North Salt Lake where they had that road fall in on, on the, on the house, is cities will receive geotech, floodplain, erosion control type studies, and not really have geotechnical engineers on staff or floodplain-type engineers that can model floods on staff and check the engineering. And, and even though professional engineers are stamping these studies, they are being paid by a developer who has their own interests. And, and so we feel like it is very important that a, a competent consultant who is a geotechnical engineer or flood modeling-type engineer reviews those studies that, and represent us and, and ask the questions of, "Well, what about this?" And, and make sure that corners are not being cut. We, we have actually had problems with that several times in the past. We, we know of many cases where other cities have had problems. And so basically, this states that when specialized engineering has to be submitted on a development project, then the developer will bear the cost for our specialized engineers that are competent to review it, to, to review us.
Would that have solved our problem with the floodplain issue?
I, I believe it would have, actually.
And that cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to correct that problem.
Yeah, between three and four hundred thousand dollars. So that would have, would have saved us quite a bit of money. All right, so going down. One of the things that, that we are detailing here, and this, this is coming out of recommendations from our transportation element of the general plan, but a maximum of fifty units will be allowed in a subdivision where you have one access out onto the collector arterial roads. What we, what we don't want is, is basically a dead-end subdivision to get too big before a second access is opened up. One of the things, we, we have an allowable grade standard, and there's two changes that, that, that we're proposing here that are significant. One is, is we are applying the allowable grades to driveways as well. We, we've had recently some very steep driveways proposed. And we feel like to protect the future homeowner, we, we need to put a limit on what a driveway grade can be. Also, with low-impact development, we are finding that we can lower the grade, the minimum grade in a development and let it flatten out and not require as much fill material to build developments. And, and so that is being proposed to go down to a point three-five if LID principles are being used in the development. Now, at one time, when I first came to work here, our minimum grade was point three. That's very difficult to, to pour curbing gutter at a point three. Point three-five is also really, really flat. But if you have lots of inlet into LID, it works fine, so. Uh, going on. That.
Sorry, we're running now.
Okay, so we used to do a one-inch overlay. We're transitioning to only requiring a preservation coat. We're finding it's better to just put your asphalt down in the thickness it needs to be and then preserve it with a seal coat right after. Another change is, and we just passed it, but that's fine, is there is a pipe that's, that's being used quite a bit now. It's a, it's a corrugated polyethylene pipe, which comes in larger sizes and is, is actually very strong and works very well in sewers. In the past, we've only allowed PVC pipe up, up to the twelve-inch size. And then after that, they have to use concrete pipe for large sewer lines. The problem with concrete pipe is hydrogen sulfide gases get in there and they really corrode the piping. And there's a lot of problems with that. This new pipe actually has, doesn't have that problem at all. It's a lot easier to install. It comes in twenty-foot lengths that can be installed instead of eight-foot lengths. And it works, works very well, and, and, and the sewer lines hold up a lot longer. We, we tested this and allowed it in, in a project there in the Walmart area. And in a couple other projects over the last two or three years, and are very happy with it. And, and what the reports coming in from other cities and, and DOTs that are using it are very good. So we are now requiring that over concrete. So we don't allow the concrete anymore. And that, that will allow those pipes to, to hold up a lot longer. I'm going to talk about all of this when we look at the standard drawings, so we can keep going. Okay, so you'll notice that we deleted the hillside site development. We, we are working on a whole new standard for some of the more often-used specialized engineering. So like hillside development, erosion control, geotech. And we have a draft form of that. It's going to the DRC next week, and we will add that in and get that to you. But in the, in February, you should have a final version.
So you have something that will follow any geotech study that needs to be revamped, revisioned in some of our stuff?
So, so if, if there is a study that we feel is not adequate in existing subdivisions, we require that update before the house is built. Our goal is to get all that work done before a building permit is pulled so that the developer bears the cost of what is it going to take to build a house on this lot? And then it protects future lot buyers and homeowners to say, "Oh, well, actually, there's going to have to be a lot more done on the foundation here because of these issues, and that's, that's no more upfront." And, and the cost to do these specialized engineering studies are a lot less if you're doing it for a whole development versus making each individual lot owner pay for those individual studies. So economically, as a, you know, looking at it from five thousand feet, it's a lot better this way financially as well.
Because each lot could be different, especially up in the hills and...
Exactly, and we, we are requiring a lot-by-lot type study or summary, I guess, so that each lot knows what, what they need to do in order to build. One of the, the really good changes, I feel like that we are proposing, is to have the utilities measured from the lip of gutter instead of from the center line of the road. When you measure from the center line of the road, on your arterials and collector roads, you have all the utilities in the travel lanes. Whereas if you measure from the edge of the gutter on those bigger roads, you're keeping it more in the shoulder. And I think that's where we really want our utilities. It's still consistent, developers and engineers know exactly where the utilities are at every time, but we're measuring from the edge of the gutter instead of the center line. So that's a pretty, pretty good change. Now, storm grain, it doesn't matter as much since you have to go both directions to the inlet boxes, and so we're putting that at the center. This is a pretty good change right here. We, we are installing our valves at the Ts and crosses in, in our intersections. It's, we feel like that's a lot better design. But with that, you, you end up with valves really close together. And if you put your concrete collars around, you have some pretty creative looks. It just looks bad, and the concrete doesn't hold up as well, I feel like. And it also, the asphalt, you have lots of points in the asphalt, which, which, which I don't believe will hold up very well as all. So we came up with some standards of if you have three valves or four or two, this is how we want it to look. Okay, here's, here's one. And, and this, this is becoming really popular with, with a lot of cities in, in putting a concrete apron around their fire hydrants to keep weeds or, or things to be planted that might obstruct the hydrants. So quite a few cities have adopted that. We've had a similar standard with our electrical boxes for some time, and we feel like it will work well with fire hydrants as well. So pretty minor changes. Okay, so going back up. Most all the changes are in red except for on whole new standards. We just put the standard name in red. So this is a whole new standard that didn't exist before. This is a residential LID inlet box, how it connects to our, our underground infiltration system. system. We, we have actually tested that in two subdivisions over this last year, and they seem to work very well. We've had 20 to 30 cities come and learn from us how, how we are doing this, and I think, I think we'll, we'll see a similar standard being done throughout the state. So, this kind of gives you a viewpoint of how the LID works. You basically have an infiltration system here. You have your inlet here. This is set level with some minimums and some maximum depths. When, when this becomes too high, or this too little, then you have to start a new one. You have a gap, but the idea is water comes down the curb and gutter. It enters into the LID inlet box. It fills up this underground detention, and then if it ever gets full, now, now, it's important to realize, this is a hundred-year storm worth of volume.
Say that. Here's, here's, it says 100-year storms.
It should not get full very often, but it does seem like we have some pretty good storms every once in a while. But, that being said, it should not get full very often. And then, if it did get full, let's say you had a water main break right here, you're going to fill this up, right? There's always an overflow that goes out, which eventually will be to a storm drain pipe and to some detention basins. But what this does is it attenuates the water so that you don't have the peak flows of water coming into your pipes, so your pipes can be smaller. Typically, in a storm drain system, you, you calculate what the time of concentration is and the peak flow of water. And so, you might only have a five-minute or even a two-minute interval where you have the large CFS, maybe 50 CFS of water hit that pipe, but you have to design it for the 50 CFS. This attenuates the water and just gradually lets it into your piping system so that you never see that big peak. And so, it, basically what it does is it makes your piping systems become a lot smaller, but it also pushes them out. Part of our lowering the grades on our subdivisions so they're flatter also makes it so that eventually, you know, everything has to be flowing at an angle, although eventually, you might, you might run out of grade and, and have to start climbing and then go down again. At those points, there will have to be a storm drain system. But that storm drain system will be smaller, it'll be pushed further out from the development, and it will go to LID detention, which is designed to handle 95% of the rest of the water, and those also will be smaller. And so, overall, the goal is to make it so that at the end of the pipe that goes to the river, you rarely if ever see water going into the river, which we feel eventually will need to be treated. And that will be very expensive. So, those are just connections on LID. Now, here's a pretty good change from what we presented to you last year, as we wanted to experiment with LID. We are finding that along collector and arterial roads, it works better to use a storm tech system instead of the milk crate system. That makes a little more sense. Storm tech system is basically a half-pipe with rock and fabric around it. The storm tech system, you can put manholes onto it and you can clean it. And so, it's much like a pipe, but it, it works very well for this type of, of situation where in, along a collector and arterial road, you can put manholes, large boxes, and, and that's usually not a problem. And so, this is, this is the collector road LID system versus in the residential, we just want all to be hidden. We don't want...
Is the pipe solid, or is it perforated?
It's perforated, you know, up the first 18 inches of it. Solid on top. Most of the water goes into the ground through the bottom. It's actually sits on a bed of rock, and then the fabric is around the rock. Now, that works ver, a lot better than a French drain, which a French drain is designed to gather in water from the ground and drain it out. Well, French drains, we have a history of them clogging the fabric because the water is coming from where the dirty silt is into the rock, and so the fabric keeps the silt back, but the silt has a, a tendency of clogging up the fabric, and eventually, French drains seem to fail. This is the opposite system. The water comes in clean. We have the snout system to keep garbage out of it. Even if garbage got by it, this is cleanable, that is cleanable. But the water is introduced into the rock, and then it's clean and it pushes out into the ground. And so, the feeling is this will last a very long time, if not indefinitely, and even if it did stop working as well, they're cleanable.
See, that, that'd work great, because that's the problem is with French drains that comes in.
Exactly. And so, for those of you who know a little bit about French drains initially, there's a little bit of concern here, but I think we've done a pretty good job of listing out all of the fatal flaws and addressing them. One, one innovation that came out of the DRC, though, that I thought was really good, and it allows us to put the street, the trees more in the center of the planter, is we push the LID up next to the sidewalk, which then kind of protects the sidewalk from the roots of the trees, as well as allows us to plant the trees in the center of the planter so that they don't overhang the road or the, or the sidewalk too much. So, I thought that was a pretty good innovation that came out of the DRC. Okay. All right, now, we have the road cross-sections, and you better go back to that top one, it's probably the most controversial. All right, so, all right. So, one, one of the, one of the important things about LID is...
Reader's, Reader's Digest.
Mayor was telling you to do that? Okay.
Read more in peace.
One of the important concepts of LID is minimize pervious area. And so, don't build your streets wider than they need to be, have more impervious area as much as you can. So, this does have the narrow cross-section, which is 29 feet of asphalt, or 33 feet of, of driving area from curb to curb. So, that is something to, to really take our look at. We, as staff, recommend it, like it's safer and it's better, it's, it's lower cost to maintain, and makes for a, a much nicer neighborhood. That being said, there's also a residential...
You're losing us.
Okay, well, on a side note, Richard. Ouch.
Start over. Start over, we lost it.
When did, when did I lose you?
We'll go back.
No, I, I can start, I can start from wherever I lost you.
We've talked, we've talked about this a lot of times.
This is, this is our first rodeo with this.
Hey, you know, we're going to go home and go through this whole thing, so it's okay.
All right, well, I, I just got to get one last, well, maybe two more. One of the, one of the major changes that came in our transportation element of the general plan that we brought is we wanted a different cross-section for each number of lane roads. We don't want two different cross-sections that has, cross-sections that have three lanes. We just want one two-lane, one three-lane, one four-lane, or five-lane, one seven-lane. And so, this introduces a minor collector road, which is a two-lane collector road, and then all the rest have adjusted accordingly, and they also have the LID in it. So, that's a big change. Okay, going down. One, two, two last things. One is our electric. You know how we talked about, let's go down to the electric really quick. Okay, stop right there. Before, in the electric, we just put concrete right here to, to make sure that we'd have good access to our boxes. It worked fine, it looked awful. It just looks really bad, and it doesn't protect us from having weeds and stuff growing around electrical boxes. So, similar to how the, the fire hydrants are, these are going to be aprons instead, and it'll, it will keep the weeds from growing into electric boxes all the way around it, and it also, I think, will look a lot better. Going back up, on our parking lots, we changed... Okay, so, on our parking lots, a little bit more, right here. This was 24 feet, we changed that to 26. That's more of a industry standard and is much more comfortable to drive in, especially if, if you have a truck. Going down one more, and this is my last comment.
Promise?
Promise. And this is, okay, this includes the reduced width intersection, so here's, here's the standard for a T-type reduced width. If it was a, a cross-type intersection, you would have this on the other side. Any questions?
Thanks, Chris.
No questions at all?
Sorry, you can talk to him on your own time. Appreciate that. No, you can ask it if you want to.
I just thought maybe you guys would want to know. I noticed that the bond change for 15% retention.
Well, that's state law. We're, you're bound by that.
Yep.
State law changed that one?
Yeah.
Okay. I move we go into closed session for land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman Davis, go into closed session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.